These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours drive, but miles away from the way to the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the mass that jut into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at Michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the municipal council meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the city of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, October 20th, 2014. Please call the order.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Valdora?
Here. Please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone had the opportunity to read the minutes from regular session of October 6th, 2014, and closed session of October 6th, 2014. Issues, corrections, amendments, no? Any modifications to the agenda this evening? None? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during council meeting that you're allowed to address council. Tonight, with the exceptions of the topics of the proposed Brownfield Plan. So if you have comments about that, you can wait until the open hearing. And the application for communal commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate, you can also wait until we get to that public hearing. Any other comments or issues, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Consent agenda this evening, are bills to be allowed in the amount of $204,230.25?
May we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Valdora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Announcements this evening. Halloween trick-or-treat hours are from 5:30 to 7:30 in the city of Alpena on Friday, October 31st, 2014. I have a merril proclamation to read. Whereas the National Bullying Prevention Month is a campaign in the United States founded in 2006 by Pacers National Center for Bullying Prevention, and whereas the campaign is held during the month of October and unites communities nationwide to educate and raise awareness of bullying prevention, and whereas Ms. Maya Bellinger introduced National Bullying Prevention Month and Unity Day to Besser Elementary School as a fourth grade student in 2013, she has successfully expanded her campaign throughout all schools and into the rest of the Alpena community. And whereas all schools within the Alpena Public and parochial school systems will be highlighting Unity Day on October 22nd by inviting staff and students to wear orange and create unity-building activities. And whereas Unity Day is also about promoting respect and tolerance for kids, for all kids, while encouraging them to positively interact with their peers. And whereas residents of all ages can visit Pacer.org or follow the National Bullying Prevention Center on Facebook to learn about ways to prevent bullying. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Alpena, do hereby proclaim October 22nd, 2014 as Unity Day in Alpena and encourage residents to wear and/or display orange and come together in schools, communities, and online to prevent bullying. I'll, um, I don't ordinarily, but I'll mention this evening that Maya's campaign has really been inspiring to me and the city. Just the amount of support that she's received from her parents, the school systems, city staff, obviously the Girl Scouts, as you'll see in a moment, and now myself and council is just, is inspiring and really been an honor to be a part of. So if she'll join me with her Girl Scout troop and parents, her photo. Bring 'em on up.
On up, girls.
Not at all. Not at all. We're in your way. This is your moment. Do it. All right, next up, we have a public hearing. This is the proposed Brownfield Plan of Austin Brothers Beer Company, LLC at 819 and 821 West Miller Street. Open the public hearing with a, and a report from the city manager.
This past summer, city staff was contacted by Dana Blake and Grant Austin requesting assistance in locating a site within the city for the purpose of developing a production brewery with a tasting room and a small kitchen. With the aid of city staff and Jim Cleridge of Target Alpena, the properties at 819 and 821 West Miller located approximately about 800 feet northeast of the Miller Street right of way were chosen by the company. The 821 property contains a 7,250 square foot warehouse, light industrial office building, while 719 Miller is the site of the former QC Wood Products, which burned in 2005. That was the time of the Arrow Steel Thunder Bay Moving fire. Options to purchase both properties have been completed, allowing the Austons the opportunity to conduct proper due diligence. I might add that Grant Austin has been in the past several years in California, a brewmaster with a major craft brewery in San Diego, if I'm correct on that, and will be the brewmaster here at the facility in Alpena. His brother Blake is, I guess, like the CFO, the financial man. And it's all overseen and held under tight rein by their father Dana. Yeah. The primary issues at this time are environmental. The 819 property was previously tested and determined to be a Part 201 facility. That is, it's a contaminated site. We used our EPA grant that we had at the time to do work on that and the site of the former Arrow Steel Thunder Bay Moving. And because they were looking to sell the properties, unfortunately at that time could not find any buyers, but we did do Phase 1 and 2s, and it was determined that the, both of those properties were contaminated. And they therefore will require the preparation of a BEA, baseline environmental assessment, and a due care, I should say, due care plan for the entire site. The 821 parcels, there's actually three parcels making up 821 Miller, have had a Phase 1 environmental site assessment conducted and are suspected of being contaminated as well due to past use and the environmental condition of the adjacent properties. Consequently, a Phase 2 ESA is required to determine if they are indeed contaminated. The company has its financing in order to purchase and redevelop the properties for the brewery. However, the costs for the environmental activities were not originally anticipated and assistance has been requested. Generally, these activities would be reimbursed through a Brownfield TIF, which we have done three or four in the past. This would utilize tax capture that is based on revenue generated from the improvements on the property. In this case, most of the investment is in equipment, which will be tax exempt. This results in a payback that would be extremely long and not worth the effort and cost. Consequently, as the Alpena Authority for Brownfield Redevelopment Executive Director, I'm recommending that we utilize the Authority's local site remediation revolving fund to cover these costs. This is what we did to cover many of the costs when we demolished the Beach Motel that the city purchased last year. The eligible activities include conducting and preparing a Phase 2 environmental site assessment, a baseline environmental site assessment, or assessment, a due care plan, and environmental site remediation, if that is necessary. The hope is that it won't be. All these activities are eligible under the Brownfield Redevelopment Act, PA 381 of 1996, as amended, and may be funded utilizing the Brownfield Authority's revolving, remediation, revolving fund. This fund was established by the city's Authority for Brownfield Redevelopment utilizing TIF capture, once all other eligible activities included in a Brownfield, a project Brownfield plan have been paid for. Over the last three to four years, local tax capture from the NOAA-Alpena Mark project and the Lafarge Brownfield TIFs have been placed in this remediation fund for future use by the Authority. The fund allows the ABR Board and council to expeditiously, on request, that will benefit the community by assisting in the redevelopment of Brownfield sites without having to apply for state or federal grant funding and incurring the time legs inherent in the application process. All such requests to utilize the site remediation fund are reviewed and acted upon on a case-by-case basis. Currently, the fund contains $102,653, with an additional $91,000 to be deposited from this year's tax capture. The NOAA TIF expires at the end of this year, while the Lafarge TIF has one more year before expiration and will yield an additional $64,000 to the fund. To access these funds, the eligible activities to be paid for must be included as part of a Brownfield Plan approved by both the city's Brownfield Authority and council. Additionally, a public hearing must be conducted before city council and all affected taxing jurisdictions notified to the hearing and provided an opportunity to comment on the proposed Brownfield Plan. The public hearing is scheduled for tonight. Notice was published in the Alpena News on October 9th. And all affected taxing jurisdictions were sent notice by certified mail on October 7th. The plan itself calls for maximum expenditures from the site remediation fund of $74,750, including $9,750 in contingency. Of that amount, $20,000 is for remediation and may or may not be used. All estimates are on the conservative side to ensure that sufficient funds are available. The Phase 2 ESA, the BEA, and the due care plan would be paid through a direct grant from the funds, basically as we did with Beach Motel. They were simply paid for by the fund. However, if site remediation is necessary, those costs that would maybe, that could be incurred will be repaid to the fund through a simple interest loan with a personal guarantee from the company's members. And that has been signed, that document, a development grant and loan agreement has been signed by the, by Dana, as, it can be signed by any one of the members. He signed it, which does spell out the loan and also the grant, and if the project didn't move forward, that they would have to repay the grant as well if they don't even move forward with the project. The company, as I said, will be required to sign, which they've done, a development grant and loan agreement. Any unused monies will simply remain within the site remediation fund. It is possible that the other portions of the, of what we're going to spend money on, the other elements, if they do cost less, then those will, those again, funds will simply remain in the fund. The AABR met Thursday, October 9th, to discuss and act on the Austin Brothers Beer Company, LLC Brownfield Plan. Following a presentation by staff and discussion by the board, the board unanimously adopted the attached resolution, which you have in your packet, approving the plan and authorizing transmittal to the council with a recommendation to approve. If council concurs with the Authority's action, it is requested to adopt Resolution Number 2014-11, approving the Austin Brothers Beer Company Brownfield Plan and authorizing use of the site remediation fund to pay for eligible expenses included in the plan. You have a copy of the plan. Even though we are required by law to notify all the taxing jurisdictions, there is no tax capture, so no taxing jurisdiction is affected financially in any way. There are no taxes being captured. We're using already captured funds that are in the remediation fund. Basically, they will be able to begin work as soon as possible. The first thing will be to do boines, soil boines, and also boines to go into groundwater, and we're monitoring wells and test those. They'll gather their samples, and then those will be sent to labs, and then a Phase 2 will be completed on that, the report, and then a BEA and the due care plan. The intent is that they will be able to close on all the properties around the 23rd of December. And then the equipment will be coming later, probably later this spring, but they'll be working on the building in the meantime. So, as far as we see it, is a big plus, because we've had the Fletcher Street Brewery, which was, proved to be very good for the community. Unfortunately, it has closed a second time, so we have no brew in the city. We're in the community, period. And so, when they came to us, we saw this as a very big plus. And where they want to go, we think, well, hopefully begin opening up that area for further redevelopment. That's my report. Are there any questions? Otherwise, we go to the public hearing. As I think I already introduced, I'll be players. So if they have anything to say, they can do so during the public hearing. And of course, you can ask them any questions you may have.
Okay. So I'll open the public comment. Anyone from the public would like to come up to the podium and comment? Otherwise, you don't have to, if you don't. But you're available for questions in the, in the event we do. Any written comments received by clerk?
No.
Thank you. Sorry, got a horse here. Close the public comment and open city council discussion.
I'm going to ask you a real tough question. Why, why did you guys pick Alpena?
Come up to the, yeah, come up to the.
Now I found out who the PR guy is going to be.
Pretty much, we were going on a family vacation about 10 years ago, and we're from Southern California. And we went to Florida, picked up a motorhome, did a tour of the United States one summer, and I was right out of high school. And started coming up Lake Huron Coast and just happened to not get far enough to go up to Lake Meconon and ended up staying in Alpena and hung out here a couple days. And it's, my brother liked the drawbridge and some other stuff, and it was a kind of reminder of where we grew up. We came from a town that was kind of a horse town and about 10,000 people, and it around 2003 bumped up to about 50,000 people in a couple years. So, went from small town to big town real quick, and then kind of fell in love with this town and kept coming back yearly and during the winter. So we've been here in the winter, so. And all bought, my dad bought a house here about six, seven years ago, and then I bought my house a couple years ago, and my brother got one this summer, and then we finally, this summer, all got to move up here after my dad retired from the fire department. So, pretty much, there's a good hole in the market for a brewery up here. There's nothing besides Spurgin Brewing Company on the northeast. There's Big Box, but they're not really going to be doing what we're going to be doing. We're aimed towards production, and we have extremely large equipment to do that, about three to four times the size of Fletcher Street. So we are getting ready to ramp up and be able to get our beer all, all over Michigan.
That's a cool story. I appreciate you sharing that.
Just give you a name and address, please.
Blake Austin, 614 South Sixth Avenue.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say that this Brownfield is really important, and without the funds, we won't be able to do the project at that location. And because of the height requirements from our equipment, there's not very many buildings in town that could support us. So this building is pretty important to us to get into. So if, it's important for us to get these, and we really appreciate you considering us for, for the funds. I'd like to thank you.
Thank you, Blake.
Well.
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
I move that we would approve Resolution 2014-11.
Seven.
Proud to do it.
You don't even get to ask what kind of beer they're going to.
It's beer, Sean.
No, and I don't think they would, you want to tell them what kind of beer they're going to list? Or the secret. Unless it's still a secret.
We have, my brothers brewed at one of the top 25 largest craft breweries in the United States and are known for kind of big, bold flavored beers. So we're going to have that for the craft beer drinkers, but we're also going to have a lot of light beers at the tasting room, lagers, blondes, wheat beers. We're going to have about 12 beers on lineup, on the lineup at the top room at all times. And we'll have two to three being promoted and distribution throughout the state of Michigan through bottles. So we're pretty much 12 beers, beers for everyone kind of thing. So if you like something, we'll probably have it.
That's how we, we would humbly love for you guys to have Alpena on the bottle sometime. As you send it out of the community.
Yeah, through our, through our logo guy, we said we need, we need to show where we're coming from, so it'll be on there.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Do I have a second? Any other discussion?
I have to say, they had me with, we fell in love with Alpena while we were on vacation in Alpena. That's how I got here, so. It was a good move.
When you're ready.
Okay, Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Valdora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, happens to be here. I know he was very helpful in that. Full organization of that. Next up, we have a public hearing for the application for commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for Alpena Lodging LLC. Open the public hearing, a report by the city manager.
Okay, back on September 3rd, the Alpena City Council established the Amerilodge Group Commercial Rehabilitation Center for a property located at 225 River Street in downtown Alpena. This being a prerequisite to the filing of a PA, excuse me, 210 Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate application, which is basically a long-winded way of saying a tax abatement. The PA 210 exemption certificate is part of a financial incentive package negotiated between Alpena Lodging LLC, the property developer, and the city to support the redevelopment of this vacant commercial property for a new Holiday Inn Express Hotel. At a future meeting, council will be presented with a tax increment financing Brownfield Plan, that is the second component of the financial assistance package for the hotel. As part of the application process, councils required to conduct the public hearing, which is scheduled for tonight, at which time the applicant, public, and representatives of the affecting taxing jurisdictions may comment on the application. A legal notice announcing the public hearing was published in the Alpena News on October 9th, and the following taxing jurisdictions were notified in writing by certified mail. That is, the city of Alpena assessor and municipal council through the clerk, Alpena County Board of Commissioners, the Alpena Community College Board of Trustees, the Alpena Mount Lawrence Alcona Education Service District Board of Education, and the City of Alpena Downtown Development Authority. Under PA 210, all local taxes on the increased value of the real property resulting from the redevelopment project, excluding land and personal property, may be abated for up to 10 years. The city and Alpena Lodging LLC have agreed to and are requesting from council the maximum 10-year exemption certificate. The exemption certificate would commence December 31st of this year and expire on December 31st of 2024. The total amount of taxes abated during the term of this certificate is estimated at approximately $774,000, based on a taxable value of $2,468,100 for the hotel development. That was calculated by the city assessor and could still change once the project is finished. So what the actual abate will be, we won't really know until those final figures are in and they begin that process here next year. Since the hotel will be located within the city's Downtown Development Authority, it would need to forego its own TIF tax capture from the project site and from the project to be superseded by the tax abatement and the Brownfield Plan TIF necessary for the project to move forward. Consequently, the project and the proposed financial centers were presented to the DDA Board at its September 2nd meeting. Although no final numbers were available at the time, the board voted unanimously to support both the project and the financial incentive package. And I believe Leslie is here. The PA 210 exemption certificate will provide increased cash flow to the project during the initial years of its operation. The future Brownfield Plan will reimburse Alpena Lodging for the extra building and site construction costs due to environmental and geotechnical conditions prevalent on the site. Together, this tax abatement and the Brownfield TIF will provide the financial incentives necessary to make the project economically viable to the company. When completed, this project will provide the following benefits to the city and the community at large. It will redevelop a vacant contaminated commercial property along the Thunder Bay River in downtown Alpena through the development of a new four-story, 90-room Holiday Inn Express Hotel with a total investment of over $8 million. Serve as a catalyst for expansion of existing and the development of new businesses in the city's downtown and create 15 to 20 new jobs. Additionally, as part of an approved exemption certificate, Alpena Lodging LLC will be required to execute what you have before you, the attached monitoring and development agreements. And they have signed both of those. We'll get those signatures completed tomorrow, and then they will be attached as, as part of the application. And copies also provided to the Alpena Lodge. The development agreement establishes benchmarks based on the commitments of job creation and capital investment included in the application and provides potential consequences for failure to meet those commitments, including repayment of abated taxes and revocation of the. to meet those commitments, including repayment of abated taxes and revocation of the certificate. Consequently, staff recommends approval of the PA 210 Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate for Alpena Lodging for a period of 10 years commencing December 31st, 2014 and ending December 31st, 2024. If following the public hearing, council concurs with staff's recommendation to request to adopt the attached resolution 2014-12. And I will add, the last time we did one of these, well, two times ago actually, with the Dean Arbert, the resolution was not quite the way they wanted it and it caused some problems. So this time I submitted it ahead of time and talked with the individual who reviews them on the phone. We went through it and the resolution as it's written is acceptable to treasury. So that will not be an issue. It has everything, all the required statements and everything in it. So if you do approve this tonight, staff, Karen and I will complete the package of documentation that's necessary, with the intent to get it in by the end of the month. Because by law, they have 60 days to act on it. So if you get it in after the 31st, it's possible they could fail to act on it this year, which would make for real problems. Because in essence, within building it, there would be no increased value to abate. Because the base value would be basically almost, if not the finished hotel. So that's why we're moving ahead as expeditiously as we are. That's it.
Thank you, Greg. I'll open this topic up for public comment.
Jerry Flannery, Everhill Drive in Macomb Township, Michigan. Just wanted to say thanks to Greg and his team and Leslie and the DDA and Jim for supporting us and bringing us here. Much like my predecessors before me who spoke, yeah, there's some challenges to this site that we don't normally encounter on our development projects. We're absolutely thrilled with the site to have a river, you know, for our hotel to back up to and a lake, you know, just down the road. You don't get that very often, you know, when developing a limited service hotel. So we're thrilled to have it. It just has some challenges and certainly needs some support. So I'm here to ask for that and, you know, answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else? If you want to stay for a moment, there may be some questions for you. Any written comments received by the clerk's office? No? I'll close the public comment and open it for city council discussion.
My criticisms of abatements in the past have always been that the city held up their end, developer didn't have to. So I appreciate that staff has kind of ironed out these monitoring agreements the last couple of times. And certainly Holiday Inn Express is willing to hold up their end of the deal. So I'm more than happy to help you guys out. I know there's some specific challenges down there in a small space. So I think we're all excited to have you. And if this helps move it forward a little easier for you, then it sounds good.
Yeah, I feel the same. And these are just tools that we can use to help you, the same as the Austin Brothers. These are properties that have been sitting here vacant, yours for quite some time with different projects tried and failed. So it's just, it's a very positive thing for the city to say the very least, that you've accepted that property. And anything that we can do to help you through that challenge, I think is pretty easy from my perspective anyhow. We have, I guess just additionally, we really don't have anything to lose. I get it. There is a lot of, there's always a lot of talk back and forth about abatements and about other agreements that we, that the city is losing something. From my perspective, we're not losing anything. We're helping you with a property that we were gaining really nothing from. So I think it's positive.
Yeah, we appreciate the opportunity to create some jobs, you know, spur some additional activity. Hopefully, you know, somebody wants to come in and see the brewery and it sounds like it'll be a stone's throw away from our place.
We're excited. Yeah. Have a shot.
Yeah, some unique things certainly for us here too. And so, you know, yeah, we're excited to do that. And I've had a great partnership with ICH and appreciate their support and helping us, you know, working with Jim and folks to get this site to be here. So, yeah, we look at it, you know, from that perspective as well. So that we'll be able to hopefully spur some economic activity, you know, create some jobs, you know, and get some folks up here and, you know, give them a great, you know, experience in our hotel. So.
Excellent. One thing, just a quick comment that, you know, I'd like to make back when, you know, I was running for election. One of the comments that was made is that council doesn't have much in the way of creating jobs, you know. And I spoke that we create the environment to create jobs. And I'm in favor of this, obviously, because this is another step in the right direction of creating that environment. So.
I would like to add one thing that I neglected to say during my presentation. Discussions back and forth with Jerry regarding the development agreement, we made some modifications. And then one he brought up, what if we, which can happen, five years down the road, Alpena Lodging sells it to some other entity? What happens regarding the tax abatement? And so I added a paragraph which you don't have, so I'll just quickly read it. It just says, "In the event Alpena Lodging LLC sells the Holiday Inn Express property prior to the expiration of the exemption certificate, Alpena Lodging shall inform and the purchaser shall agree prior to the execution of the sale to sign a document committing that we would provide that document to the terms of the development and monitoring agreements previously signed by Alpena Lodging for the duration of the exemption certificate. Failure to do so shall result in the immediate revocation of the exemption certificate and repayment by the purchaser," not Alpena Lodging, "but whoever buys it, "to the city of all taxes abated after the sale of the property." So basically between the time the sale was completed until the abatement was revoked, if there was any abatement occurring, they would have to repay that. If they don't do that. So it protects us, but it also protects Alpena Lodging in terms of they would not be responsible for any of those taxes. And it also allows them to sell it. I mean, he was concerned that they wouldn't be able to sell it for the 10 years. And that is not the case. As long as this is followed.
Greg was great in working with us on that point. Just for the record, we haven't sold any. We have 13 under construction right now. And it's not our goal, but rules of the road sometimes never hurts. We appreciate him working with us on that point in the event of detection.
Greg, are there any motion or is there more discussion?
I move we adopt resolution 2014-12.
Okay, there was three seconds there.
You're the one I heard. Oh.
Okay, I think you said you got me.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes. Thank you, Jerry. And again, thank you, Jim Clerich, for all the work that you do with that one.
We will be in there.
No reports, no communications, no unfinished business. We're down to new business. A is the lawn cutting services. Rich Solinger is here.
Basically, what this is, is in the event that properties within the city need to have lawn cut, we went up the bid and this contract and service provides that cutting opportunity for use by the city. Basically, Mike and Don can call these folks, say we've got a property at this address, these two contracts will do it. This was bid in 2012 and we did allow for a one-year extension on the contract. Tom Maile, the owner of Alpena Lawn Care, provided pricing for lawn care, cutting services, as shown on the attached. And actually, he went down in price at three of the four heights that we asked him to quote at. So it's my recommendation, city engineer, the city council renewed the lawn cutting services contract for Alpena Lawn Care and Maintenance, but the renewal price is proposed.
Rich, we just use them when we're overstaffed, not overstaffed, when we're overwhelmed, right?
I mean, we do have the opportunity to use DPW. Typically, we've been using this service because we go on cutting. I've got a charge for the truck, I've got a charge for labor, I've got a charge for lawnmower. But what you're getting is two people, two neighbors, I'll just say two neighbors, we're getting their lawn cut. When the city goes on cutting, by the time we put all that in travel time, it was a $75, $80, $90 bill or more if we had to do some cleanup as well. Whereas this is 25. And it's kind of tough to justify to two citizens standing there, well, yours is 80, yours is 25. So we've typically been using this, have not had any problems, any concerns from DPW staff about it. They've been very good to work with on this and we understand. And they have more than adults. It's not like we're taking work away from them because they have a lot of other work. So this is always really our primary source to go to. And then it's only if that doesn't work for some reason, then DPW can always do it.
I move we approve and renew the lawn cutting service contract for Alpena Lawn Care and Maintenance for the proposed present.
Second.
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Rich. Now we have 2014 resurfacing contract modification number one.
At the last council meeting, council authorized the 2014 resurfacing project, which included a number of streets, plus also the easterly most parking lot at the corner of Lockwood and Third. And at that time, I mentioned that we were getting prices from them to be able to do the other parking lot. We did get that information back and put it into the spreadsheet. Quantities of the pricing are shown in the attached contract modification. The work included with this modification is the parking lot directly across Lockwood Street from the original parking lot in the contract, and also the section of First Avenue from Water Street into the parking lot behind the, not Armory, Greg.
Memorial Hall.
Memorial. You got chewed on me about that today. You're using the wrong term. Sufficient funds are available in the downtown parking lot resurfacing. Basically, we budgeted $113,700. The previous contract for the parking, the other parking lot contract amount was $48,500. This one is $64,515, which brings us to $113,365, about $335 under what we have budgeted. Plus, there's also some items in here that we're not sure we're going to use to the full estate that are listed here. It just depends when we get in there and get start pulverizing the surface, what we encounter. We also will be, as part of this, right now, the lighting of those two parking lots is via wooden poles, single armed overhead lights, sodium, high-pressure sodium lights. And we want to get rid of those. We're going to relocate the lights more in the center of the parking lot, put double arms on them to get more lighting out, plus put high-efficiency heads on the lights. But we do have, we need to go underground. So we contracted Thunder Bay Electric and asked a price from them to install that underground lighting, which they did, or excuse me, underground work and installing the bases and wrecking the light poles, et cetera, for $8,505. There's adequate funds of the citywide efficiency, citywide efficiency upgrades lying within the light fund to complete this work. We set that up to do this and these are going to be the high-efficiency lights that we're going to be installing. The review of the prices provided by Goodrich as well as by Thunder Bay Electric is my recommendation, city engineer, to authorize contract modification number one for the 2014 resurfacing contract in the amount of $77,057.50. Again, that includes the second parking lot, plus the small piece of First Avenue between, you know, Federal Building and Memorial Hall. And also authorize the electrical work proposed, relocate and upgrade the lights within the two parking lots in the amount of $8,505.
The, I'm assuming, and just as a reminder, both parking lots closed simultaneously so we can do, you know, the work on everything all at one time. And what is the proposed timeframe on that as a reminder for completion?
Parking lot should be closed in about two and a half hours. The pulverizer is sitting there, the grader is sitting there. What the intentions are is to go in, they would pulverize the whole parking lots, grate them off, only close off the sections that we need to. We've got to tear two concrete islands out, actually, three concrete islands out, and pour those back in. So we're just going to block off that portion. Balance of parking lot will be available for parking, but it's going to be limited. Then when we get ready to start grating and shaping it, we will close it completely. And that should be, the schedule all falls into place. It could be as early as next Tuesday that we would be looking at paving those lots, weather permitting. But then the light poles won't go up until December 2nd because that's the soonest I can get them done.
It just is a quick comment to Rich. This is the second time, I believe, that we were able to do this. And my compliments to you and the staff about, we started out with money budgeted for one parking lot and we were able to do some additional streets. So I compliment you on being able to get that work completed as well as a section of street that wasn't in our plan for this year. So thank you.
Rich, whenever we put up new light structures, they're pretty consistent with one another, aren't they? Like we're all throughout town.
Well, we try to, there's been, with the LED lighting, which we're going to, is the high-efficiency lighting. There's been a lot of technological advances, even in the last four or five years. So what we're doing is we're, we put out, we got quotes on the different styles of LED heads that we can put up. And we're going to try to standardize on these as long as we, as long as we can, as long as they don't tie your shoes right through the roof and get priced themselves out of that work. But we are trying to standardize so that I don't have, I don't have to stock five, seven, eight different brands.
Lights in the private sector seem to be getting cheaper than the alternative. But as-
We were paying $1,500 a head. We did those from 23 Johnson Street back to just about the museum. Those were, those heads were about $1,500. The new ones, I think, we're buying for, I want to say about $650.
Okay. And they can be, like, as technology changes, can, I guess, part of the question that I, that I kind of heard is will the structure of the light be cohesive with the rest of town? The pole, the way that they come off of the post and things like that?
It'll look very standard to the ones out here in the parking lot behind City Hall with the two arms going to each side. Those are the lights we're going to use. They'll just have it, instead of having, they call them a Cobra head, that the light fixture itself, it'll be more of a flat, square light fixture.
Yeah. I think I'll probably find that just about anywhere unless you tear the whole city out, I want to. Awesome. Good questions. Yeah, the average payback time on that, do you have any figures on what it would be like to pay that back on the savings itself? Because it's quite substantial, as I understand.
I haven't, I haven't crunched the numbers on that.
I move we approve contract modification number one.
Second.
Yes.
I assume it also includes the-
The 850. With the electrical. That's in addition to the $77,000, right?
Yep.
Just we have to come from a different fund.
And it comes from a different fund.
Yep. Understood.
Okay. Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
C is downtown NEZ policy and rating schedule. Adam?
In an effort to bring more people, people of life downtown, the city of Alpena has participated in the MISTDA rental rehab program, which provides building owners with grants to construct new residential units in the downtown. Previously, these owners received $35,000 per unit created and were required to provide a 25% match for the grant, although most of the time the owner's match was closer to 35% or more of the cost of the entire project. In order to make these projects more desirable, the city created a downtown neighborhood enterprise zone, NEZ, that would allow the owners to evade any new taxes created by the new residential units for up to 12 years. At that time, there was no policy established or rating schedule to dictate the amount of time the NEZ abatement would apply. Since rental rehab funds have begun being used over 10 years ago, over 20 units have been created downtown and all have received a maximum 12-year abatement. After closeout of the last round of rental rehab grants, staff was informed by MISTDA that the per-unit grant award would be increased from $35,000 per unit to $40,000 per unit. With the news of the additional available funds per unit, staff and council agreed that some sort of policy or rating scale should be, should be in place that would continue to encourage quality development. Staff has worked on a rating system that would reward owners for additional investment and amenities as well as encourage quality design elements. Depending on the number of, depending on a number of factors, owners for these units would receive zero to 12 years of NEZ abavements. Owners that would receive zero, three, six, or nine-year abavements would have, would have the ability to add design elements or amenities to these units and potentially lengthen their abatement period, encouraging higher-quality units. Some of the design elements that could potentially lengthen an abatement period would be adding elements such as open floor plans, skylight windows, exposed interior brick, et cetera. Amenities that could be factored in include hardwood floor, hardwood tile floors, granite countertops, built-in dishwasher, elevators, et cetera. A committee would ultimately determine the points awarded, and points awarded for the categories of design elements and amenities. Staff believes that with the additional $5,000 per unit grant award, the proposed downtown policy and rating schedule is fair to any owners participating in these grant programs for future projects and would request that the city council approves the policy. You should all have a copy of the policy in your bag.
Well, I'm glad to see this implemented, similar to the one we used on the Thunder Bay overlay. Are you going to use the same committee?
It's slightly different because the DDA will be involved this time since it falls within theirs. Otherwise, it's, I think it's the same other than that.
Correct. The only one who goes as a DDA director again because that has more impact than the DDA or any other potential.
But I might, I think it's a good idea.
I don't know if this is for Adam or Greg or Leslie, but how many more units could we even potentially develop downtown?
There's a couple large buildings that I could easily see utilizing this program. Between those two, I could see at least 20 units going. There are a number of other smaller buildings. So I couldn't put a specific number on it, but 30-plus.
I wouldn't hold you to that, just-
I think, I think we've-
I don't know if it will.
Yeah, we've built, I think, about 24 or so within the downtown. And this next grant, actually, only two of them are going to be in the downtown. The others are out there around Ninth and Chisholm, where they were going to get the area expanded. They won't own in the NEZ, so they aren't affected by this. But yeah, there are, Adam's working on some others that could be larger projects, but it, we'll just have to wait and see. Yeah, there's opportunity. The biggest issue really becomes kind of the parking because as you add units, it always is, as Leslie knows, you know, those people want somewhere to park where they know it's theirs all the time and it is their dedicated space and that, for some of these, it won't be that big of a problem because of where they locate. Some others, it could be, you know, that's always an issue that we have to work with.
The 24 that we've created in the last, I don't know, five or 10 years, those historically were filled, aren't they?
I think right now, all of them are occupied to my knowledge. Usually, if they go make it, it's not for very long. I think the longest was one Scott Barclay had, and he was rather surprised because I think it took him two or three months to actually get it filled, reoccupied. But generally, it does not take long at all.
Basically, these are designed so that it kind of encourages just for them to add more amenities, but it might actually pay off for them if they say, hey, that will give me three more years where I'm not paying taxes, why not put the granite countertops into that? Don't get me wrong, we've had very good developments downtown and we've had some quality units. I don't know if you've had a chance to work on them, but they look great. But it's hopefully we just get a little incentive to look that much better and it's been a pretty good program.
At least in the market rate ones, especially where they're doing more than one.
Is there a time period after the committee meets and gives them a number, whatever that number is? Is there a time period that they have to say, okay, I'm going to put in, you know, stainless steel or, you know, granite countertops? Because they have to come back to the committee then, right?
If they decide that, hey, yeah, I would imagine that we would have to work out with the committee, but if they look at it and say, well, if I do these things, you know, that would probably give me three more years to get them back, so.
Excuse me.
So there probably would be a little back and forth, but.
A lot of it, they probably can go to Adam first. He can look at it and say, well, look, here's what, just on the basis of what I've seen is what you're likely to get. If you want more, then you're going to have to, you know, step, step it up as far as the amenities and some of the things you put into it. Because the key will be for them, because it's not until that's decided, does it go then where they actually can apply and have council, you know, act on it? And then we run into the, what will come up next here in terms of that timing issue. So I don't think it'll be that. They, most of them have done very good, I mean, all of them, I shouldn't say even most, all of them have done really nice units that we've had developed in the downtown.
And they'll be given all this information, like, during the design phase, any-
Correct. They're going to, I mean, the important part for us was-
At the application phase, so.
Was to finish that before this next round of grants came through. So we've done that and obviously we got, we've been awarded that grant, but we haven't actually made any, specifically signed any grant arrangements with anybody. So we have, we've had this discussion and they're all aware and we'll make sure we get that in the guidelines as well.
Okay. And so I guess just from my limited knowledge of how this would work, because I wasn't, really wasn't that involved in the Thunder Bay overlay part, but the, this really, this program that you're proposing doesn't really have that much of a bearing or any bearing on whether they are approved for the grant, it's just how long their tax abatement might last.
Correct. There's no barrier off in the grant approval. They, for instance, they could say, I'm going to do the bare minimum, still get the grant and that's not a problem. They just won't receive the NEZ funds at that point or the NEZ payments up there.
Somebody who doesn't get a grant, who does it all privately, can apply for this. So it is not tied to the grant either way. So if you don't do a grant and develop them without that, for whatever reason, you decide to do that, you're still eligible to at least apply for this.
As long as you're in the zone.
Right, as long as you're in the NEZ zone. I think right now, everyone except you have, that are in the zone, have them. And that was a decision, because actually they were right on the edge and we would have had to expand and they would have had to wait six months and he did want to and he said, forget it. That's the ones out on Washington that Ryan Woodward did at the old real estate, Sunrise Side Real Estate office, when he converted those to two townhouses. They're right on the border, outside, and he just, over the, of the CBD district, which was what was required, he just said, forget it.
You just need us to approve a policy and rating schedule nicely, right? I move we approve the policy and rating schedule for new construction of residential units.
Second.
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
I move we approve- The policy and rating schedule for new construction of residential units.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
I move we approve-
Maybe we approve resolution 2014-13.
Second.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yep.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thank you, Adam. Next up, resolution number 2014-14, a resolution authorizing the submission of a U.S. Department of Agriculture, Agriculture Community Facilities Program pre-grant, pre-application and provision of local match for police vehicles. I got like way ahead of myself.
I wrote that just for you.
Did you write that? Thank you, Joel.
Good evening. During the budgetary process for this fiscal year, council approved $70,000 for the purchase of replacement patrol vehicles and related equipment. As the attached proposal, proposed resolution indicates, the U.S. Department of Agricultural and Rural Development Community Facilities Program offers limited grant funding to assist public bodies who will be purchasing a certain equipment, including patrol vehicles. Under the current USDA guidelines, the city of Alpena may be eligible to receive up to 40% of grant funds for the replacement vehicles. I therefore respectfully request council adopt resolution 2014-14, a resolution supporting grant funds from the U.S. Department of Agricultural and Rural Development Program. That was tough.
It's kind of fun, isn't it?
It is.
Say it five times.
Three times.
Seems like a no-brainer.
And if anybody have any questions, we'd be happy to attend.
It's the same grant that we got last time, Joel, or is it-
Same program.
Same program?
So we're looking roughly, we're applying for two grants and if we are awarded both grants, we receive approximately $30,000.
Typically, what's the turnaround time been for you on this one? I think it was, was it a year last time that we-
Just over a year last time.
Okay.
But it was, you know, first time through, so there were a number one learning curve. The second, there were a number of things that we had to do then that, you know, we completed that we shouldn't have to do again. They had come through and inspect the public safety building, make sure like the pipes were wrapped and that we were, yeah, that we were ADA compliant and so forth. And so those things have all been taken care of. So it should be a little bit smoother this time.
Excellent.
Seems like a no-brainer.
Any questions for chief?
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
I move we approve resolution number 2014-14. Second.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
I move we approve-
You are watching All About Alpena.